Let's call this meeting to order, may we have rule call please.
Floyd?
Here.
Goldbeck? Palagian?
Here.
Hatwick?
Here.
McNary? Broper?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
Thank you very much. Has anyone, everyone had a chance to approve the meeting then? Are there any comments or corrections to be made?
I found none, I'd motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved. On to number three, agenda. Steph, you had a change to make on the agenda?
Yes, staff request that the commission review continuing matters after the main commission items.
So we move the presentation and some of the other elements up for the people here?
Yes, please.
So we'll move commission item six. We'll swap six and five for each other.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the amended agenda? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. No items on the consent calendar. So we will go on to the next item, which will be commission item eight.
Assistant Director Sanchez is going to provide a status update for the Producers Dairy Project.
Thank you.
Following the city council meeting that was held on March twenty second.
Thank you Laura. Again, my name is Mike Sanchez, I'm the Assistant Director for Development Resource Management, and I am the staff member assigned to the Producers Dairy Project, as you're well aware, located on Belmont Avenue between Fergo and Roosevelt. As many of you are aware, this matter came before council back in late March. After a long considerable debate, the council opted to continue the matter in efforts to have the administration, the mayor's office, work with the Shahadi family to try and find an alternative site. For those who are familiar with the details of that meeting, one of the things folks kept talking about during that meeting was the covenant that was running over the property. So, so as opposed to the council taking any action on the item that night, they opted to continue it period of ninety days, which is in the middle of June, in order to allow the administration to work with Shahadi family to find an alternative site that'll hopefully find, you know, solve the issue once and for all. And as of this date, I'm not aware of any potential sites, and I have not been part of those discussions with the mayor's office, but if something does break loose, we'll certainly get together with all parties involved and let them know what the next steps are in the process, and I will certainly let this commission know of that, of any updates that are forthcoming. That'll just answer any questions the commission might have.
So are we safe to say then that the property is safe from?
I would never say never, but I think, you know, if you were at the hearing or listened to the hearing, the council was, I mean, the council was pretty adamant about not wanting to move forward on the item that was before them, so they opted to choose to pass it they did that night, so I would say never say never, but I think it's very important that all parties keep informed as to what the next steps will be.
The family seems pretty...
I haven't talked to the family directly, but the, my understanding is that the administration is working with the family to try and find these alternative sites, and I think there's more of a sense of urgency now to try and get something resolved, because who knows what will happen if it comes back, so... But I think there is more of a sense of urgency, so I think they're looking at sites, you know, maybe sites they've looked at before, I don't know, but they certainly want to try and find a win-win situation, obviously.
Possible, I know the mayor has a task force, but if he would like to roll in somebody from our historic preservation group, I think that'd be well received and help projects like that along, as I know they're probably dealing with quite a few projects.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly relay that to the administration, but if there is an alternative site, then the other issue's going to be what happens to the remaining site.
Sure, yeah.
I think that's where perhaps this committee might get involved a little bit more. I think that's something that, you know, needs some discussion, and then what will they actually do with that? If it's not the site selected, so... But until such time, we're kind of in a holding pattern, and I'll certainly keep this committee advised accordingly as things develop. Questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Painless, huh? Painless, huh?
You know, before you go, should I should open up to the public for comments?
Yeah.
Mike, do you mind hanging around just for a little bit? I'd like to open up to the public if there's any comments or questions on the producer update. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Anything else, anything to add? There's no action item required for this item, so free to go, Mike, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's go on to commission item B, please.
The owner of the Elia home has requested that their property located at six thirty-four through six forty Van Ness Avenue be considered for listing in the local register of historic resources. The Elia home was owned and occupied by the Elia family, an Armenian immigrant family, beginning in nineteen-ten, until the death of Ann Elia in two thousand and one. Sam and Ruth Elia constructed the two-story duplex residence in nineteen fifteen with the intention of occupying the first-story unit, six-three-six, and providing housing for the children in the second-story unit, six, in unit six-three-four, after which it would be rented out. The two-story duplex residence is wood-framed and exhibits elements of the and colonial revival architectural styles, which include the hipped roof, the symmetrical facade, the porches that span the full width of the facade, and the doric columns seen in support of the porches, and as a decorative element of the built-in dining cabinet. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's my turn, thank you.
Okay, so, a unique original interior feature of the duplex residence is the door-opening mechanism for the main entry at the top of the stairway in the second-story unit, six-three-four. I got to try it, it was pretty fun, and it still, still works. By nineteen thirty-five, Sam had partnered with his son Joe in a painting contracting firm called Sam Elia and Son, and were operating out of the newly-constructed one-story storefront commercial building at six forty Van Ness Avenue. Sam retired in nineteen fifty-one, at which point Aram's Walk and Watch and Clock Shop began renting and operating out of the storefront commercial building, and continued to until nineteen sixty-nine, when the building was vacated. The one-story storefront commercial building was constructed of brick and exhibits elements of the Art Deco architectural style, which include the smooth wall surface, the use of chevrons and other stylized and geometric motifs as decorative elements on the facade, and projections which provide a vertical emphasis. The Elia home is located towards the center of the sixty-plus block neighborhood of Arminian Town, as shown in red. Fresno's Armenian population peaked as a result of the Armenian genocide between nineteen fifteen and nineteen twenty-three by the Ottoman Empire, forcing the immigration of many Armenian refugees. The Arminian Town neighborhood contains only fragments of Fresno's original Armenian community. Arminian Town initially developed as a mixed-use neighborhood, primarily with residential use, but naturally developed into a mixed-use neighborhood with diminishing pockets of residential use and growing patches of commercial use, especially along Van Ness Avenue. Credit is owed to Dennis Elia for these family photos, which show the Elia family, family members, as well as some character-defining features of the home and its change over time. Starting from the top left, Sam and Ruth Elia posed in front of their home during the late nineteen twenties. Ruth Elia stands in the location where the one-story storefront commercial building would be constructed. Their family dog Sun bathes and keeps a lookout on the front porch. Ann gives her dog Pepper a treat on the front porch. Family gathers to celebrate in the dining room in nineteen sixty-eight, where you can see the original built-in dining cabinet, and the Elia family pictured with Sam and Ruth centered and surrounded by their children and grandchildren. The Elia home is greater than fifty years of age, retains historic integrity, and meets local register criterion one, because it is associated with the early development of the Arminian Town neighborhood, and works toward honoring a rich segment of Fresno's early ethnic history, as well as criterion three, because it has distinction as a live-work property type, specifically as a residence with a storefront commercial addition. Because the Elia home appears to be eligible for the local register of historic resources, staff recommends that the commission approve the request for designation and forward to city council.
Any questions for Steph?
No questions, but this is one of those properties that I think most people would assume was already on the register since it's such a prominent building, and it seems like this would have been there, but happy to see another element of old Arminian Town. It could be designated as well, just adds to the fabric.
I love the fact that it was, like, it was, it's always been a duplex. It was, it's not like the state-owned converted sometime in the sixties, it was planned that way, and then with the little shop added on the front of it, it was just...
Unique character.
It's very, very cool. Questions for Steph? I'd like to open up to the public for comment. If the owners here would like to make a comment, we'd love to hear from them too.
I'm the owner. Yeah, sounds great. It's a cool house, myself and my partner on this, it's like four of us.
Philip, could, would you mind coming up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll catch you for the record.
So, myself and three of, so my name is Philip Cleaver. I am a part-owner of Ashaka LLC, which purchased this home, six-three-four to six-four-oh Van Ness, nine-three-seven-two-one. Yeah, we walked it about a year ago with Aaron Blair, who used to work for the Downtown Foundation. And it was, it was kind of, it's in decrepit condition, like, but we fell in love with it. It's, it's definitely has, it has great bones, it's stood the test of time somehow, when everything else around it is, is gone, for the most part, on that block. So, yeah, we have good, we have big plans for it, we're gonna do some good stuff, and honestly, I'd like for more people to just enjoy the fact that something like that remains in that end of downtown.
Yeah, it just seems like you're, it seems like there's gonna be a lot that's gonna build up around it, and that is gonna be one extremely unique piece in that area of town.
Yeah, yes, totally, I totally agree with you. Hopefully, we can get some, there's, there's only a few property owners around that end of that downtown, so if they can somehow get it together to actually do something, you know, I think it'd be a great area for, you know, for more residences, apartments, or condos, or as well as kind of some, it's a walkable neighborhood, it's right down the street from Bitwise, then you go Hop K, and Zach's Brewery, and Tioga, like, it's just, it's something that can start, you know, if there's more people like us who are willing to actually get something going, I think it's gonna be good.
Yeah, forthcoming announcements yet, or is that still sort of in the works as to?
It's all in the works, yeah, no, it's all... Yes, sir.
Is it, how's it, how's it structured, is it in good condition?
It's in fantastic condition. I personally did some, some exploratory demo, because we're gonna have to do a lot of sheer, you know, some seismic upgrades and stuff like that. We plan on converting to a commercial building. Fortunately, it's just not, it's not, it just, it seems like the best use for it is something that's open to the public, you know, something like that. So we're gonna convert it to a commercial occupancy-type building. We know that there's some things that come with that, but it's, there's a lot of cities that have houses like this that you can go to for businesses, you know, I mean, fortunately Fresno does, I don't think Fresno has enough of that. I love going to, to see houses that are, you know, like this, and other, you know, sip a brew or a coffee in a, in a little, you know, historic house patio. Like, that's awesome, so I think there's, there's a lot of potential for this house, it could be anything, but go ahead.
Just wanted to make sure you're where, that if you're listed, you can use the state historic building code, you know all that, right?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
That's why we're here, among other things. Yes, I mean, we were gonna be subject to some of those, the historic building regulate, whatever you wanna call it. So, yeah, it just seemed like a no-brainer.
Tell other people that.
Yeah, it gets a bad rap, right? I mean, we're not, we don't actually have big plans for changing the outside, I mean, I think it could use a good paint job, but as far as keeping the overall way it looks, we're gonna keep the same. I'm not actually, I'm not even gonna take off the siding, we're just gonna fix it, paint it. Actually, there used to be color on it, it hasn't always been white, you know, you actually go down and there's this really bright shade of blue, like, sky blue. So, yeah, I think it's gonna be good, so hopefully we can get it, we can get it fixed up in a, in a year sometime. It's gonna take some time to pull it all, pull it all together, so... Thanks for being one of the creative and courageous ones.
Any other comments from the public?
I think it's really good to see that Fresno is starting to preserve some of their older homes, 'cause they're so unique, and you go to other cities and you see them around.
Sally, do you wanna come up?
You come here, well, you know.
Yeah.
If we could get your name and address too, please.
My name is Sally McCoy, and I've been in Fresno since nineteen sixty-nine. And I love these old homes, I think they're magical.
Me too.
They have, have charm and class, and so many of the homes that they've built since the fifties, sixties, seventies, except for some of the newly-new and modern ones, are just boxes. They all have eleven windows in them, and they're nothing. And we've got places like this, or like my little magic place. And I think those should be preserved, because once they're gone, they're gone. And if you ever go back east, there's tons of homes around, and people have kept them up, and they're living in them, and they're loved. And we see this part of Fresno that's just kind of going in the dumps, and I hate to see that. I think if we can preserve some of these older places, then we'll see that love for that come back, and new homes going in around it, or businesses, or whatever it may be. Hopefully, we'll flourish and continue to do well, so... That's my two cents about you. Please.
Thank you very much.
Am I outta here now, temporarily, or should I just stay?
You'll have to come back, well, unless someone else wants to come.
Come on up, please, thank you.
What do you mean to speak of this issue? Jeremy Clark, five-seven-three East Terrace. I work near there, I take walks near that house, I think it's wonderful, just because it's one of these places where there's unfortunately a higher number of homeless individuals wandering down that way, and it's, it's one of those homes that I just could see losing to a fire or something like that if it wasn't maintained, so congrats. That's, that's great.
You likely just saved a critically important part of downtown Fresno.
Well, maybe, you know, Fresno can help me get it, get it together. It costs some money, that's the thing.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll bring it back into commission, final comments?
Thank you for bringing it to this commission, Robert. I'd like to make the motion that we, through staff's recommendation, move forward with the designation.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. Item number C, please.
Here you go. Property owner Sally McCoy has requested that her residence located at sixteen-nineteen North Adeline Avenue be considered for designation as a heritage property. The McCoy residence was constructed in nineteen eighteen, making it one of the earliest homes to be constructed within the high-edition subdivision of the Tower District. The residence was constructed of clay tile block and exhibits elements of the French eclectic Italian Renaissance, French eclectic Italian Renaissance and craftsman architectural styles, among which are the side-gabled roof, open overhanging eaves and with exposed rafter tails on a rear portion of the roof, and the presence of vertically-oriented vents beneath all gables. Its unique character-defining feature is the off-center pop-up OG pent roof over the entry. In addition to this original character-defining feature, the main entry consists of an original wood-framed Palladian-inspired composition that includes an arched wood-batten door, covered by a metal grapevine screen door that is flanked by small side-light windows with three divided lights each. All door and window openings are original and wood-framed, and all windows along the primary elevation and on the eastern portion of the north-side elevation are original multi-painted wood casement windows with single-pane glass and metal hardware. Exstant original interior features include wood flooring, plaster walls with wood picture frame moldings, wood-framed doorways and windows, and wood-paneled doors with metal hardware and crystal doorknobs, as well as built-in wood furniture and a claw-foot bathtub. The McCoy residence meets the definition of a heritage property as a resource which is worthy of preservation because of its historical, architectural, or aesthetic merit, because it is an early example of residential development in the Tower District, and exhibits elements of the French eclectic Italian Renaissance and craftsman architectural styles. Because the McCoy residence appears to meet the definition of a heritage property, staff recommends that the commission approve the request for designation.
Any questions for Steph?
Yes, why heritage and not local register?
Heritage, because I could not find enough evidence to show that the property embodied an architectural style or property type, and did not find it to be distinct enough in that way.
Yeah, we actually, Cora, I looked at this last, last year with that same conclusion, that's why we recommended heritage, at least at a minimum, until we can, you know, find some more history about the house. I mean, a hundred years old, it's gotta have some history in there, so it's, it's just hard to find.
It's a lovely property.
The architectural style's probably indicative of a lot of homes down there, where it's, there's kind of a mixture of a lot of, mixture of different elements into a single home instead of one classic statement element, right? And that's what I remember, it's my recollection kind of in the area.
Nice patchwork of architectural styles.
Eclectic.
I think that's an indication of sort of architecture without architects. It's, probably was designed by a home builder who knew enough to do something that looked lovely, but didn't have the kind of theoretical underpinnings of a, you know, well-defined style, and that's probably what that was.
Yeah, yeah, and probably one of the first in its neighborhood, I mean, it was there as, as the lot being developed, you know, which is really unique for, for that area, there's not a whole lot of hundred-year-old homes right there.
Does this fall within, just kind of sort of the dotted line of that Adeline Palm potential district?
I don't think this property is included within that, within that potential district, although I didn't look further into that district for this meeting, so I could, could do that. But the good thing about nominating a property as a heritage property is it's a step toward local register if that is a possibility, so we at least wanna move it forward.
For the Mills Act, are heritage properties eligible?
My recollection is it's just local registered, but they would be eligible for the Preservation Mitigation Fund, which was established last year.
But the Elia house is, would be eligible?
Correct. Yep. That's right.
Would I get the benefit from the first part of preservation?
Yeah. Exactly.
Comments from public? Come on up.
I brought some notes, I'll kind of refer to them. I purchased the home in ninety-six, from a gentleman who said that when he moved into the house, it was pretty much falling apart. His wife sat in the bathtub and looked up and saw the stars and cried. He said, sat in the bathtub and looked up and says, "Oh my gosh, this is so cool." He has restored much of the home. It has been kept in its original style, it has the original built-ins. Original wood floors in the living room have all been maintained. It's about a hundred and one years old now. I have absolutely loved it, it's a magical place that's got a lot of warmth, and it's, it's a happy home. The back bedroom has six windows that face west and six windows that face north, and you can open all those windows and you get wonderful breezes in the evening that came in there, that must have been important to the builder, thinking, "Ah, when we go to bed, we want it cool." It still has the original chimney in the middle of the house, where at one time there was a wood stove, and you could see where it tied into that chimney, and also where the gas stove that came along later tied into that chimney for venting. I remodeled the kitchen in nineteen, or twenty-oh-nine, and we went back to the lath and plaster, because the kitchen was not pretty anymore. We kept cabinets where they belonged, we put the stove back where the original stove was. And we, at one time, it had a greenhouse window in the kitchen area, they had, somebody had just cut the opening and done it, and taken some of the, the bricks of the house, they widened an area, and there was a hole, they'd stuffed newspaper in that hole, from the sixties. That was from the sixties, 'cause dates were on the newspaper. My contractor went in, rebuilt that with brick, brought it up to level, and, and kept everything in theme of the whole entire house. We have replaced the house, windows in the rest of the house, other than that front and east side, or the east and north side, with dual-pane windows, it's a home that's lived in. From my understanding, it has probably been through time, at times, a rental home, somebody bought it and rented it out. It's only two bedrooms, at one time it was one bathroom. Previous to my purchasing the home, that one bathroom had been made smaller. They kept the original wood claw, or steel claw-foot tub is in the bathroom, and that integrity is there, and then there's this little tiny closet-sized master bath that has a shower that all you can do is turn around in. Closets are small, it's really good for getting rid of clothes. But it's just such a delightful little home. When we redid the kitchen, there were like four or five layers of floors just on top of each other. We went down to the original, it still had in that stuff all the original linoleum, the old nineteen-eighteen linoleum was still in that house. It has crown molding, high ceilings, it's, and it's a place that's been loved a lot, it's a happy place. I think it needs to be, it deserves to be recognized. It was probably built in that area before most homes around it, just because of the date it was built, there's nothing else around it that's of that same period, they're all nineteen-twenty's, nineteen-thirties, nineteen-fifties and sixties are the homes that are around it. So at one time, it had to sit on this little piece of property out there all by itself for several years before the rest of the area was built and filled in. I think that alone, just the fact that it's been there forever, is important to preserve. And I would hate to see someone come in and change the charm of the front of it, or any of it, for whatever reason, I'd like to see it preserved. That's my two cents.
Thank you very much.
I love that little house. Do you have any, anybody have any questions about it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I won't go far till you let me know.
Any other questions from, or comments from the public?
Here you go, bringing back in, commission members. This is really what it's all about, you know. Yeah, I'm happy, friend of Sally's and just happy to see her home get to this stage and, and hope that our votes do recognize it, and Sally's ready to get a plaque on this thing. And she's ready to show this to the public. So I'm excited for her, and it's a lovely home. I've been by it several times and just a gem of the Tower District, so I, I hope we can vote tonight as a heritage property.
Is that motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second that as a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing that.
If you know, we bring these little houses, and see the buildings that are, that are massive and beautiful and people of importance lived in them, this is the one of the little homes that people like us lived in back then, and from that period on, just everyday normal people, and I think we as a country, a nation, and a city should preserve some of those little treasures as well.
Agreed. All right, let's move on to item D.
All right, the California Office of Historic Preservation, the OHP, has requested review and comment from the City of Fresno Historic Preservation Commission regarding the nomination of Hotel Fresno to the National Register of Historic Places. City staff has drafted a letter in support of the nomination for the commission. The OHP has requested written comment preferably at least fifteen days prior to the State Historical Resources Commission meeting on Thursday, May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, at which time action will be taken on the nomination. Staff recommends that the commission review and approve a drafted letter addressed to the Office of Historic Preservation regarding the nomination of Hotel Fresno to the National Register of Historic Places, and provide additional comment if needed.
I had a couple of questions on the, so the paragraph, third paragraph, looks like we're correcting, making some corrections?
Yes, I found some clarifications that were needed in the nomination.
Are we trying to make three clarifications? Is that kind of how it ranks down? One was on...
One, one discusses the overall division of the building, and then the other one clarifies the structure of the base or the ground floor, saying that it's not only two floors, but it's a, it's a ground floor with a second, partial second-story gallery that overlooks spaces. So two things.
Okay.
I can make that more clear if you...
Yeah, I was just wondering if it needed to say like first and second, or, you know, one and two, or something like that. That was my only, just so it's crystal clear on what we're trying to correct or in, in the other document. Yeah, I assume you want me to sign that?
That would be ideal.
And then you, with that attachment, you included, there's a meeting on May seventeen regarding this? Is that something that we attend? Or is it just happening in...
I don't think you're required to attend. I believe it's, it's open to the public, so if you wanted to, you could.
But there's not. I don't, I don't think that there's a design, I mean, it would just be...
No.
Yeah.
Exactly.
They're really fast. I mean, when they, they have multiple state and national register items, and so it's, it's, if you went, you're wondering...
Snap and go, snap and go.
Snap and go, yeah, by the time it gets there, it's not, not slow.
Okay.
Yeah, the most important thing, I guess, is that all, any comments or is it, probably fifteen days prior to May seventeen, so this will be the commission's comment by May second or whatever. We'll probably send it a little sooner than that.
One thing I found interesting is the photo, and it was on page forty of the handout, the drawing that was now open for business staircase going. The photos of it actually being opened that particularly, particular year, no staircase. So I'm wondering if that was around the era that Fresno was putting storm drain systems in and bringing things up. I wonder how that played out, because looking at the drawing staircase and looking at the photos...
Under the front entry, there was a step.
Front entry, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it never existed.
But now it's a flush entry.
Yeah.
That's the same thing we learned on the printing press.
Republic, the...
Right.
Okay, see the entry? One thing, just observing the details, because the description might have been okay because it had a grand staircase before it was actually built, in the design aspect only, that was at some point taken out. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Here, no, I'll open it up to the public, comments or questions to the public? Moving on, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the drafted letter addressed to the shippo with no additional comments.
I'll second.
Except for the one...
Yeah.
Except for the, yeah.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And so you'll just let me know when I can come in and sign that?
Sure. If you like, we can do so after the meeting, if that's most convenient for you.
All right, so then we will go back up to the continued matters.
Following the Historic Preservation Commission's consideration, review, and direction to look further into nine noted potential historic, potential historic districts and areas or themes of interest on Monday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, further information was gathered in order to assist in the prioritization of movement forward with previous surveys that have been conducted. The nine noted potential districts and areas or themes of interest are as follows in no particular order. The Brick Warehouse and Office Building District, Yosemite Avenue Local Historic District, Fresno Hitching Post Thematic Historic District, Thematic Survey of Blackstone Avenue, Thematic Survey of Shaw Avenue, Chinatown Historic District, Terrace Gardens, St. John's Cathedral District, and Historic Warehouse District. Following the Historic Preservation Commission's consideration, review, and direction to look further into these nine noted potential districts, further information was gathered. All survey materials were gathered that pertain to the noted potential districts. Critical information taken from those materials for each included the survey year, whether it is contiguous or discontinuous, or thematic, if a district record and DPR survey forms have previously been completed, comparison of contributors to total properties, the number of listed properties included, the degree of development pressure, the need for intensive survey, and the need for reconnaissance survey. And this table reflects the initial findings. There's also a printout in case this is difficult to view for anyone. Staff is seeking direction from the commission regarding the status of potential historic districts and historic surveys according to the initial findings for the previously noted nine potential districts and areas or themes of interest. I've also prepared an interactive map in case that's helpful for the commission to look at as we try to prioritize which districts to look further into.
And with that, we can zoom in on any of them, see she's identified what properties within those potential district boundaries are already on the local register and things like that, so very helpful tool.
Very impressive use of Google Maps, too, I might add.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Is there a certain area the commission would like to start?
I certainly appreciate the three you've identified, but, you know, as we said, the low-hanging fruit.
Ah, yes.
It seems logical to do what can be done with a minimum of effort to get the minimum of momentum. It was three.
Are you referring to the Brick Warehouse?
Warehouse and Office District, Yosemite Avenue and Historic Warehouse.
So what that does is it allows us to go pretty quick on some of those, right? And while putting these others in the queue to, and in order to, to...
Yeah, at least identifying what has to be done so that can also go forward.
Now, Chinatown Historic District, I saw that one as a need for extensive survey no, and the forms have been filled out because we had the high-speed rail stuff, right? So... I think, I think that could be added pretty, on that quick list as well.
Definitely has development pressure.
Right.
Yeah, good point.
I'd love to, I'd love to get those going so fast. Preserve. Grading any further? Now, does that put us at a position of, okay, now we have four essentially that can go quick, what do we do with the other bunch? I mean, do we prioritize and organize those on which we should put in the queue to do surveys and stuff on? You know, we've done, the City of Fresno's done surveys, I don't know how many of it can handle a year, though. So is there a timing aspect we need to know about that as well?
I would say that if, if some of the higher priority potential districts that come out of this, this workshop haven't been subject to an intensive survey like Chinatown and some of the other ones, then there will definitely be, you know, you know, just resource management that has to happen. In order to make that happen, there, sometimes these things can be done in-house, sometimes South Van Ness, you need consultants, they're big areas, there's a lot of work to be done. There, you know, we've been successful in the past getting CLG grants to help fund some of that, you know, so the, the more of the work that's already been done up front, like some of these, then the less that that's an issue. But if there's something out there that, hey, you know what, this is top priority, we know we don't have a lot of the work done yet, we're gonna have to find those resources, apply for those grants, then, you know, that can change the pacing perhaps of how we're able to get to things. But if, if it's a high enough priority area and that is deemed worthwhile by the commission, then we can start looking at how those, those resources can be obtained and try to find ways to make that happen. If there are some that, hey, you know what, this is our top priority and woo, the work's mostly done, then that, that's a different, possibly quicker path. It just depends on, on kind of how you guys weight these things as you try to figure out your priorities.
Well, the Brick Warehouse and Office and Yosemite both have less for developmental pressure, whereas Chinatown and Historic Warehouse have more. I would suggest that we go for the more first and the less, and then the remaining ones also prioritize according to more as opposed to less pressure.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that because Yosemite is going to, there's so many individually-designated properties there, it's not as high a priority.
Self-protected.
It's, yeah, self-protected, and so it's set, those that have the pressure on them.
I was, I was interested to discover with the Yosemite that within the boundaries that were drawn in the North Park survey, there are actually only two of those that are listed in the local register, if I'm not mistaken. But is it possible more of those are heritage properties?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want to zoom in on that area, or, because the, the legend, you've got a different symbol for the two that are already designated, but it wasn't quite apparent in the, in the printout?
Sure, yeah.
Because of the resolution? Yeah, so they're the, instead of the little tabs, they're the circles with the stars. So it's the one at the northernmost property and then one, the...
So this one's the John Hummus...
Almost the southernmost.
Home, and then the Thomas Cowan Home.
Yeah, I don't disagree that hitting those other two districts, while we have a lot of development going on, helps, I think, helps those areas a lot more, helps those districts a lot more, helps, helps us be cautious around those, those areas. I would bubble those to the top two priority myself.
So do we agree that Chinatown and the Historic Warehouse District then be the first two priorities? And do you want to follow that with Yosemite and Brick, or do you want to look at the ones that have more developmental pressure?
I'm pretty big on Yosemite, as a residential area.
Got number three?
Yeah.
And then, I mean, certainly the historic context for the mid-century modern is very useful.
I would like to sort of put a plug in for the, there was one on Blackstone, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's a, Fresno Metro Ministry is, is launching something they call the Blackstone Design Challenge, probably in a year, year from now. It, and it would be really helpful to have some kind of a survey of all the mid-century modern buildings of note along Blackstone that helped that whole effort, that could lead to some kind of broad sweeping revitalization of Blackstone, so...
Seems like good timing.
Yeah, I don't think those buildings necessarily are in jeopardy because there's not a lot going on in Blackstone, but it would be nice to have that as a resource for that effort.
But the city's working pretty diligently, harboring up the multiple transportation hubs and stuff like that with the BRT stuff going on, right?
Yeah, I mean, frankly, you know, with the general plan focusing on infill and, and putting the BRT line there, the, the effort is to revitalize that corridor and frankly, you know, create development pressure because it's kind of underutilized out there, and so, you know... And so, you know, on most sites, hey, there's room for plenty of new things and what's there might not have much value, but there's stuff out there that does. And so identifying it ahead of the pressures that could come because of those policies would, would probably be a good thing.
I think there's, there's more than what's on this list. I think there's a number of really great Bob Stevens buildings.
Yeah.
On Blackstone that aren't on this list, so.
And that was one that does need the intensive survey.
Yeah.
And that could identify those.
That's, that's a big project.
That's standard, it's almost CIA discontiguous district, the Bob Stevens.
I'm not sure, did you?
I don't, I'm not sure it's been noted as a potential district, but that's something we could look further into. Thematic district for Bob Stevens.
Yeah.
I think there's more than just Stevens there. It's, it's mid-century modern. And Stevens is a major contributor along Blackstone, but there's, there's other, you know, fine works that aren't just his.
Yeah, Stevens owner, Stevens.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
There's also this firm, Armenton Davis, they've done a lot of the sort of, those roadside motels. They were known throughout California for doing those. And there's a couple of Armenton Davis buildings, hotels on Blackstone that would be worth.
Well, is our goal to like, just put them on a number in order here? Can we continue to do that, or?
Well, I mean, we're, we're here, you know, kind of seeking direction from you all. So the nine that were presented for you today were nine that came out of last month's discussion as something you guys wanted to learn more about, what study had been done, what has already been identified. And, and so that's what we're attempting to do today. So we have no preconceived notion about what the output of this discussion ought to be. If it's, hey, we've got our one, two, three priority, that'll keep us busy for the next couple of years. Staff, let's start working on those, that's fine. If you want to rank all nine of these so that we have a longer-term vision for, you know, how we want to prioritize these and kind of march through them over, over the next several years, then that's fine, too. So we don't want to kind of presuppose how you all are wanting to approach that. We wanted to supply information so that you could have a good, good discussion and give us that direction.
I say top four.
Okay, well, we got the top four then.
Yeah.
If we don't, if we don't categorize all nine, is there the chance that the other five fall by the wayside and get lost to history?
I'm wondering if we can keep those as a continued item on those, those other five that don't have the resources already looked at.
Yeah.
What is the?
This is probably a list that we need to look at annually.
Yeah.
And update and re-prioritize and. Because our developer, development pressures as we know them today are going to be totally different than five years from now. And so we might want to swap around orders.
Should we discuss criteria that we use to categorize them? It should be more than just, oh, I like the buildings over there.
Well, it, it's, you know, the developmental pressure.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, okay.
That's, that's a plus in the, you know, in the plus column.
Right.
So, so we've got two things going. We've got the ones that are, we can get done quickly as a plus, and then the ones that have developmental pressure. So those would push things up to the top. So what I have.
I think if we got to a place where we got to say, let's make it a district because I do like them, that would be a good place to be.
Yeah. Given the card that we got a copy of, that you sent out about things that have disappeared in Fresno, Chinatown would be a good start, since it doesn't seem to require a lot.
And I'm thinking about property owner request and how long the Chinatown and Cathy Amachi and Nandiver Group have, have sought some form of sort of relief and designation. And so I, I, I'm, all four are moving them pretty far up, up the list, if not the first on the list.
The first on the list, okay, I would agree. Chinatown followed by maybe Historic Warehouse, Yosemite, and then starting to work on, focus on the Blackstone, identifying properties. That work?
That would be great.
That's good.
Yeah, that's what I had marked down, too, is what I was trying to glean from the discussions, so that seems to make sense.
Well, just for the public's knowledge, too, we're talking developments, we're not, we're not trying to make way for development. We're trying to help what we have that can be in jeopardy.
Right.
Because development is, is, is growing in those areas and we want to make sure the resources that are there are going to be there for a long time to come, so.
The things that are at risk.
Things that are at risk.
Yeah, I could add to that, you know, you know, working on preservation and downtown revitalization, both. I wear both of those hats and they're not mutually exclusive. And the only way to have no development pressure in these areas would be endless sprawl. And that's not anything anybody wants. And by revitalizing these areas, you do get some development pressure, but you also get greater economic uses for these buildings. And, you know, you know, if cities like Detroit or, you know, or any example, you know, the, the lack of any viable economic use for buildings, and we've seen this here, too, that's the most dangerous thing for these structures. So you have to be on guard and be ready and do the, the hard work that comes with that. But bringing some life back to these areas and, and having to have these kinds of conversations means we're infilling and we're revitalizing the core of the city. And in the long run, that's good, as long as we, we have these kind of conversations.
Can I? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, thank you. If there's a scenario where, for example, the, the first three are of the size that can be done in-house, and we can program those in-house, but let's say the fourth one is so ginormous that we're gonna put that out. If we can identify, I mean, we don't have to wait four years to put that out. If we can identify that it's too big to do in-house and kick it out, then, you know, that one, it's fourth in the priority, but because it's going to be done outside, we can get it done, get it started now.
Start looking for.
I assume, I assume it's gonna take a long time to get it going. We might, all the smaller in-house ones probably get done faster than that one. So, sorry?
Yeah, I want to get, kind of, put a plug in for the Hitching Post Thematic District, which I think probably could be the most at risk because people just don't know what they are and they're easy to dismiss because they're small and they're not contiguous. And they tell a story, you know, part of our story that's significant. They're spread out and so you can miss them, they're, they take a lot of different forms. And so if they're not in our priority system, we already have, I believe, what, sixteen that we've identified. But I think it's, it's all an easy enough process to add to that thematic district after we identify the initial ones. But that could be the, the hardest to explain particularly to our council. But then, one of the most significant, after just spending six days in New Orleans, where they know exactly how many hitching posts they have and they're all protected. Every single hitching post in that city has historic preservation protection. And I just, I had hitching post envy. We used to have, you know, almost as many. But all the different types and shapes according to the socioeconomic class of the people who had, who owned the hitching post. And so if, if not in the top four, you know, I'll make a bid for number five for hitching post. And it's, a lot of that work has been done.
A lot of them are in the public right-of-way, too.
Yeah.
Meaning the property owner is City of Fresno.
Yeah.
You know, which changes the dynamic a little bit.
That's, that's why we freak out at the Mute's home, you know, when they're doing anything on the street. Like, ah, you've got a hitching post there, a couple.
Yeah, yeah.
Got moved from Fulton.
Oh, oh, really?
Yeah, those are, weren't original there, they were.
Oh, that's excellent, I didn't know that.
They were on Fulton.
You could get it started with the sixteen and it could be like a Where's Waldo of historical preservation. See how many more we could find in town, which put out the word.
Well, if there's consensus that that ought to be a number five, or because it's a smaller bite, put it at the top of the pile, or, you know, whatever you guys want to direct us to do.
Yes. I'm all for that.
Do you want to put it at the top?
I hate to put Hitching Post ahead of Chinatown, but I'm gonna put them pretty close.
Because it's, it's more doable, right?
It's more doable, we can do it, yeah.
It's a smaller list, that's for sure.
Do that.
Doesn't require geography.
The number one that hasn't been surveyed, how's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
By that criteria, chasing, that would be number, that would make it number four, I think?
Would be number? Well, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Because we've got three.
Is it Chinatown?
Well, Chinatown, Historic Warehouse District, Yosemite.
They've all been surveyed.
Yeah.
And then we go Hitching Post and then mid-century on Blackstone.
Yeah, Hitching Post.
No, Yosemite, did you say?
Yeah.
Yosemite's there, yeah.
No, it could go in conjunction, our timeline, right?
Right.
It's not like we can't, we can't start one until the other one is completely tied up and done.
It could be the first non-surveyed PC.
I had a question. We were talking about economic viability of these projects. I'd like to ask a question of the gentleman who owns the Elia Home. Had that house been listed before you bought it, would you have still bought it? And would it have changed your opinion or your attitude about its viability?
I'm not sure if I would have or would not have. I probably would, you know, I actually did a lot of research on this house before I bought it, you know, because I wanted to know how I would get myself into. So I may have done the research, like I said, I went and met with Eric Blair, who's very familiar with these, you know, a lot of downtown stuff, and he knows Dan. So maybe, you know, had I known that it's not as, you know, it's not that, honestly, not that big of a deal for what I'm doing to the property, I may have bought it, sure.
So it wouldn't have killed the deal.
But that's, but not for me personally, but I could see how it might scare other, because I have heard the sentiment from other people of, oh, no, you don't want to do historic, they won't let you do anything. It'll be, it'll be up in your business, you know? I don't know, that's the sentiment I get, yeah. I know, well, this is what I talked about, it wasn't that big of a deal. They mostly want to keep the windows similar and the siding similar and we can do what we want besides that, you know? It's, they, it wants to, everybody wants it to look the same, you know? But I could, you know, you could paint it neon green, doesn't matter, like, it's, it's the architectural details, which we're trying to keep anyways, that you guys want to see is similar, or the same, you know?
So we have our.
Commission?
Well, we have to open it up.
Do you want to read the list and, and then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can read it. So I understand that you have a top five right now, number one being Chinatown, number two, the Historic Warehouse District, number three, Yosemite, number four, Fresno Hitching Post, and five, Thematic Survey of Blackstone.
Checks out.
Good.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, and we'll keep our fingers on the pulse of the other ones and move them up as, as we can.
Yeah, I think your suggestion to revisit every year and just keep an eye on it, and then we can update it as we go. I think that's a good, good suggestion. So just keep track of it and bring it back to you.
So do spring cleaning of the list.
Perfect spring cleaning, yeah, perfect. Excellent.
All right, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments or questions. State your name and address if you would please.
My name's James Sponsler. I am the owner of the Joseph Cowdrey Home, 330 North Park Avenue, historical property number thirty-three. And actually, I just wanted to add on to what Paul had said is that initially, nobody knew the history and even knew that my, the house that I bought last year was actually a historical property until I actually brought the information forward to my realtor. And actually, what it has done is it's actually made it even more enjoyable for myself and my wife and my family, where we're taking, making the active effort to retain the historical aspects of the home. In fact, try to expand on that so that we know the additional items of the home and, and things like that to really build a better, build a better history of that home, as well as to make sure that we keep with historical elements of it, as well as the historical paint colors and things like that. So it's something that I think the, the districts that you have here and the ones that you've listed as a priority are good priorities. And I would say that job well done in deciding on the, the numberings of which ones are going to go first or be selected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up.
Real quick, real quick.
George Hostetter, seven thirty, West San Ramon here in Fresno. Just wondering if possibly the commission could explain why the Shaw Avenue possibility wasn't picked and why Blackstone was. Just looking at the districts, it seems like those two are, Shaw and Blackstone are unique. The average reader might say, I understand the Hitching Post, I understand Yosemite, but you would not think maybe Shaw Avenue would merit your concern. And maybe there's something, a teachable moment there to the public as to, one, why Shaw Avenue is one of the nine, and then, two, why it's not one of the priorities. Thank you.
Paul, you, Paul gave a reason.
I think the, the, I, I agree, I think there's, there's notable architecture on Shaw as well as Blackstone. I might argue that the notable pieces on Blackstone may be older than Shaw. Shaw, I think, kind of came of age in the sort of seventies, whereas Blackstone has a much longer history and I think it has more examples of a wide, broader range of architectural styles than you might find on Shaw. So that might be, in my mind, a compelling reason. But the, another, the, the reason I, I guess pushed for was there is a, a nonprofit group here in Fresno that has four architectural, local firms that will be putting some very, very intense study into Blackstone. And the outcome of that work hopefully will be used as a template or a guide or an inspiration, however you want to describe it, for people who think Blackstone is dead and should be forgotten. So what we want to do is demonstrate how the general plan combined with the BRT line can bring about an entirely new urban context on Blackstone that kind of defies what people think is possible. And I think that's a daunting task, it's, it's compelling. And had there been the same kind of effort or project that was underway on Shaw, I probably would have said, let's look at Shaw. But because there's something happening, or it's going to happen on Blackstone, this study will really help our, our work.
That was Trishalian, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's our finest hour.
All right, Jeremy Clark again. I concur in everything you were saying. I understand that the impact from potential development really is one of the highest priorities and that things will go slow until they go fast and having these things in place is correct. I just want to, some questions on sort of the devil's advocate side. So some of these things, such as residential developments, Terrace Gardens, which I'm a resident of, I'm already on the historic register. The question is, when do we, when, or, I get, I get the, the priorities and the possibility that it's just difficult. But in the meantime, I mean, really, these are districts that I see are things that should be done, but for the economic pressures we have, what can we do as homeowners to sort of, do we have any protections? When, I mean, again, I know these are pretty well intact, but we keep on going forward, you know, for example, the home. For example, if a home, you know, another homeowner decides to tear something down, really, what, what defenses do we have? What can, what can we do? Because obviously, uh, very much for preservation, and it's, seems, um, difficult to, you know, something where you can see it should be in place, but it's just not because, well, it's present.
Could I respond?
Yeah.
Wilson Island, the Porter Track, and Huntington Boulevard all became districts because the property owners, the residents, asked for it, pushed for it, over and over and over for, Dan knows, for a long time. And they organized, they had meetings in the neighborhood, I went to meetings in all three of those places with neighbors. If, if the neighbors want a district, um, this commission will listen to that, does listen to that. You, you want to move higher up on the list?
Not necessarily, I mean, I agree that, I mean, there's priorities.
I, I hear what you're saying, because I, I lived at twelve oh eight Terrace for,
Oh, fantastic.
For five years, so, um, I, I know, but it takes, if, if the residents want this, that's something that we listen to, uh, that's also something that makes it easier for council, um, to determine if the residents say, uh, we like this. It certainly was important for Huntington Boulevard, even, you know, in, and, and that wasn't an easy one to do. But the three largest residential ones that we have, the first ones, all came about because the residents pushed it.
Got it, and, and as I said in the beginning, yeah, I totally agree with the priorities that, as stated, so, thank you.
Also, when, you know, if a house is over fifty years old and a demolition permit is applied for, it comes here first.
Fant, that's great, good to know, thank you.
One, one good thing is, is even with that time, uh, you can do some things that maybe the Huntington folks weren't able to all collectively agree on, and that's get the neighborhood on the same page before it even gets to here. That way, you know, I don't want my house listed, I do, and, uh, and then it creates a much broader challenge, so, um, I would, I would hope that, uh, the anticipation of, hey, this is on the list, we're, we're going at it, um, uh, gives time for the residents to unite together and sort of, uh, come up with an, an idea, um, that they want to be and, uh, not feel like they're going to lose ability to do a remodel or something like that down the road. So use that time to educate, uh, the residents and, and get them excited about what it means.
Well, one small thing that might help is more informational packets and the like from the city. I know there's things on the website, but it does seem like there's a lot of just misinformation about the registry, so, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, right? I mean, if we're doing, if we're doing Millsack packets, we're doing all this other thing, it's basically the footwork, and if we got, you know, citizens who, you know, want to take, take over and start walking door to door and getting the i's and n's passed out and have information that they can pass out at their fingertips.
Historic District Starter Kit.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, the benefits of a historic district.
Okay. All right, um, do we need to make a motion?
No, this isn't an action item. The consensus that you guys, and the direction that you have given us is the, the output we were hoping for and, and is sufficient, so, um, if, unless you guys wanted to, um, discuss it anymore, I feel like we have, well, we need to proceed and, and, um, start to get into work.
I can...
Good.
It's great.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that concludes our picture matters item. There is no chair personnel's report. Unscheduled items, members of the commission, any unscheduled items? None, staff? Unscheduled items?
No.
I have none.
No.
None? General public, any unscheduled items, anything you want to add?
He wants to make lol of the historic district. Go for it, James.
All right.
Right behind you.
James Sponsler again. Um, actually, I, I, I do have something that's actually completely not even related to the topic of, of, of the house or, or anything like that. It's actually something, uh, um, uh, that I'd like to know if I could get some assistance from the commission. I'm actually a volunteer with the Boy Scouts, um, and, uh, actually, we've identified that one of our original office locations was at the corner of L and Kern Street, and we'd like to be able to see what we could do about, uh, getting in contact with the, the property owner and placing something, uh, to note that, um, with the idea that, um, next year actually marks the one hundredth anniversary of the Sequoia Council, uh, which represents the four counties in the area here. Um, and, and that would be, uh, very neat to be able to commemorate that, uh, as an option.
Did the Scouts build the building originally, or they...
They did not. They actually occupied the, the first floor, in fact, uh, where the current Charburger is, was actually their office. Um, and, and so they've only, the only building they've ever built, uh, here in the City of Fresno is the one they're, they currently occupy, which is actually near, uh, Bullard and Marks. But the ones that they had, uh, been in the past, uh, one was actually a historical property itself, and that was the ten ninety-five North Van Ness, uh, property. Uh, however, it, it did, was brought to our attention that in about, uh, nineteen nineteen, when the council started, their first office was seven oh one L Street.
James, if I'm not mistaken, that's the Hotel Virginia.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So it would have been a, a, one of the ground floor retail spots, uh, just about below the hotel there. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Party I go to.
I know.
This is so happened.
All right, anything else from the general public? Hearing none, next meeting, May twenty-first, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.